Please rise for the invocation by Reverend Whit Malone, Pastor, First Presbyterian Church.
Would you pray with me? All wise and loving God, first let us say thank you. Thank you for the gift of this day and for the gift of life itself. Thank you for all of the things that have made this day blessed. Loving family, meaningful work. The beauty of your creation, the voice of a friend. Food, shelter, and for the measure of health that we need to carry out the responsibility you give us. Especially this day, we thank you for the many freedoms we enjoy and for the opportunity we have to determine who our leaders are. I pray for all of our public servants, our policemen and women and our firefighters, our school teachers, administrators, and school board members. I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and especially tonight for this assembled council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom, that they may decide among conflicting interests and issues. Grant them a sense of the welfare and true needs of all the people they serve. Grant them a keen thirst for justice and righteousness and integrity. Give them the ability to disagree and yet work together. Give each of them personal peace in their lives and joy in this their task. God, I pray for the specific agenda set before them tonight. Grant them wisdom and insight and energy for the work that they have before them. These things I ask of you, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey Mayor, you need a warrant up there too.
Warrant is sworn off. Get out there and run. If you remember last meeting, I think we maybe the meeting before that, we determined that we couldn't hack it as... Well, I want you to know that when we say Hickory's finest, we mean these guys. And yes, we don't have to have any alcohol during the meeting here. They are as best I can deal, we have to do the best in this state. Whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the country, including the dedicated members of the Hickory Police Department. Whereas nearly 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in approximately 16 million deaths. And whereas the first recorded death in 1791, almost 20,000 law enforcement officers in the U.S. have paid the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty, including Gerald Maynard of Hickory PD, August 9th, 1977. Whereas the name will be dedicated by the first officer, engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officer Memorial in Washington. Whereas 286 new names are being added this spring, including 100 officers killed in 2013 and 186 killed in previous years. Whereas May 15th is dedicated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and families. And U.S. legislation has been drawn to half-staff. Now therefore, on behalf of Hickory City Council, I proclaim May the 11th, 17th, a police week in the city of Hickory and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation.
It's lonely at the top.
Well Mayor, I, members of council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crowe, would like to thank you for the proclamation of a police week. It means a whole lot that you take the time to recognize that week as the week that we honor our fallen. Myself and two other Hickory police officers have the honor to participate in a ceremony in the National North Carolina or North Carolina Police Officer Memorial Ceremony. Master police officer Lance Dean, escorting members of Gerald Maynard, his sister Barbara Zai and his brother-in-law, Seesha Zai. Master police officer Sergeant Eisenhower participated in the honor guard during the ceremony. And I have the honor of reading the bio of the only Hickory, or only police officer of North Carolina that was killed in 2013. That officer, Senior Officer Robert Bingaman of the actual Police Department. Unfortunately, already in 2014, we have two fallen officers in North Carolina. One, Jason Chris, a U.S. forestry officer, and also Alexander Thollman of New Bern Police Department. Both killed in a line of duty in March of this year. So I'd ask, just like the proclamation said, all citizens of Hickory and all jurisdictions to honor those fallen, those four individuals and all the individuals killed in line of duty on March 1st, or May 15th, to lower their flags to half-staff. If you get an opportunity next week or anytime in the near future and you see a police officer or a police staff member, please give them a warm thank you for their service and dedication to their communities. Thank you.
Is there anyone present for the lupus proclamation?
Well, we're gonna get your pictures out of the way. What I have each year, the Lupus Foundation is designated as National Lupus Awareness Month for support for the estimated one and a half day of hurt. Whereas lupus is an unpredictable, misunderstood, autoimmune disease that ranges in different parts of the body. It is difficult to diagnose, hard to deal with, and a challenge to treat. It can affect any part of the body, including the skin, lungs, heart, kidneys, and brain. The disease can cause seizures, throats, heart attacks, miscarriages, and heart attacks. Lupus can be particularly difficult to diagnose if some of its symptoms are similar to those of many other illnesses. And laser gas exists and other kinds of causes lupus. More than half of people with lupus take four or more years and visit three or more doctors before a date of healing and correct diagnosis. While lupus strikes mostly women and childbearing ages, no one is safe. African-Americans, Hispanics, Latinos, Asians, Native Americans are two to three times more likely to develop lupus, a disparity that remains unexplained. Whereas 45,000 North Carolinians are affected by lupus. Now therefore, on behalf of Hickory City Council, I proclaim May as Lupus Awareness Month in the city of Hickory, North Carolina.
Well, just thank you on behalf of the citizens of North Carolina. With this terrible disease, it's very important to get the information out on the right sort of level. These days are already celebrated National Lupus Awareness Month and May 10th is lupus week. And we're encouraging everyone to put on purple that day. If you have someone that you know with lupus or just in support, wear purple. And here's a lupus bracelet for you, so you can wear that on...
We'll be wearing this one again. And I encourage you to call Al Rowe and see if he has anything you want to show and let you talk a little bit about Lupus Month, okay?
Okay, we have with us some scouts. First of all, I'm gonna ask Scout Master David from First Methodist to introduce himself and the scouts with him.
Good evening, I'm David Cody from Troop 234, here in Hickory, First Methodist. And I have with us two scouts. I'll let them introduce themselves.
My name is Dylan Cody. I'm a live scout from Troop 234 at First Methodist, as he said. And I'm here working on my city chip and county badge.
I'm Jerry Register of Star Scout from Troop 234, First United States. I'm also working on my city chip and county badge.
And Scout Master Dalen with Troop 300 from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints.
I'm Dalen Garcia with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints here with Troop 303. And I like his approach. I'm gonna have my scouts in here.
I am David Carwell and I am a first-class scout. I am also working on my city chip and county badge.
I'm Zach Johnson and I am a second-class scout. And I'm also working on my communication chip and county badge.
I'm David T., Troop 300, and I'm from the Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints Church. And I'm also working for my communication chip badge and I'm second class.
I believe we have some youth council people. Is it Youth Council or LR, L.R. Ryan Stevens?
Saint Stevens Honor Civics.
Saint Stevens Honor Civics, they're back. Okay, we'll start over here and let you introduce yourselves, please.
My name is Jay Jay and I'm here as a part of a project that is based on... I'm Terry and I'm the same class, doing the same thing.
I'm Xana lines, here for the Honor Civics class.
I'm Darian Letharder for Honor Civics class from the...
I'm Sophia Dorentas.
Now is that the class that Hank and I went and spoke to?
Yeah.
It's all this.
Oh. And I'm also here working for my Honor Civics class.
Okay. Well, I want you to know I had a great time. Hank, I'm sure you did too. Some of the other, I think Brad and Bruce went to?
I've been too.
Did we all tell you the same thing?
Yes.
Well, I wanna know, did you all have all the written assignments? I had a lot of written assignments today. So y'all just went and talked?
No.
I've had written assignments.
Oh, did you?
I had homework. They sent me homework.
Okay, I just wanted to make it all right.
They're called emails. And I'll be honest with you, y'all may have heard this. I don't respond to those emails. I say, "Call me." I give you my phone number. Everybody has it anyway. Because I don't believe I ought to write your report for you. Nobody wrote mine for me, huh?
Didn't have to cut and paste in those days.
Anyway, we do appreciate you being here, appreciate your interest in what we're trying to accomplish here. We have two people who've asked to be heard in order, but they signed up. Mr. Cliff Moon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Cliff Moon, 2925 Eighth Street Court, Northeast Hickory, North Carolina. I rise to speak to you tonight. And first I think I need to make a disclaimer. Because I have several public roles at this time, I want to make a disclaimer, first of all, that I don't stand before you tonight as a member of a political party and as the head of that party in this county. I do not stand before you tonight as a candidate for public office either. But I do stand before you as a citizen of Hickory, as a person who appreciates the work of this council and the things that you do and the things that you are looking to do as we go forward. I stand tonight and stood one time before when Mr. Berry presented the budget to speak in regard to Inspiring Spaces. And so I do so again tonight because as a person who is running for public office, I'm not able to write a letter to the newspaper at this particular point in time. And as such, I can't write on any subject that says why I support Inspiring Spaces and what I'm doing. I would like to, I read somewhere that the glory of old men, and I'm quickly in that age group, is to be able to plant trees under which they may never sit. And I hope though, that in this case, there are trees and benches and lots of other things, including playgrounds, that I get a chance to at least sit on, if not do too much else with, at this time in my life. But I do want to stand and tell you a quick story. I came here to Hickory in 1988. I came to pastor a relatively small church here. A mainline church that had struggled through a number of years of decline at the time. And when I got here, right before sort of the boom of the 90s, as pastors are wont to do after they start settling in, I started walking around the church and looking at things. And one day I was downstairs and I found a bell, a church bell. It was tarnished, kind of, it was definitely old. It had been around a while. And it came from one of the churches that had joined together when this church was planted over in Northeast Hickory. I immediately began to think, what could we do with the bell? The bell shouldn't be down here in the basement. It should be up somewhere. And of course, I took it to my board and I went to the board and I said, "We need to do something with the bell." And of course, being boards, like councils and other things, there were people who thought, "This is a great idea. Let's build a bell tower." And I was all for that. I was pushing the bell tower. And, but there were others who said, "I just don't think we're too small right now. We don't have the money. We don't have the ability to do this. And I just don't know where we're gonna get it." Well, we kept discussing it until we came to a consensus and we began building the bell tower. Prior to building that bell tower, very few people walked in off the street on a Sunday morning to Church of the Master. A few times, yes, we had visitors and things like, but very good. But the moment we started building something together, doing something, rising up something that could ring out who we were and what we were there for, people started coming. A church that when I got there, and I don't take a lot of credit for this, but was 56 people, by the time in 1995 that I left that church, though stayed in Hickory, was a church of over 160 people at that time. That's not a huge church by many of the standards around here, but it was an exciting growth. And that's why I'm for Inspiring Spaces. And I'm for letting people, the people, have a referendum to let you know how they feel. Because I believe in referendums, I also believe in your making decisions. But I know that when we do things, when we go up and stand up and start doing something new, people will come. I'm not gonna quote the movie. But it will be a good thing. And as I've served on Inspiring Spaces committees and on Innovate Catawba, I've seen the ideas. Now, I can't say I'm for every idea that's been put out there and I will challenge them when I believe, so you know I will. But I want to tell you and I want to say to this body, because it's the only way I can say this publicly now, is I'm with you. I am for this. I hope you are for it. I hope you're fully behind it. I think it will make our city a better place to live, work, and grow. Thank you very much.
We all do that, yeah. But we understand. He was eloquent, wasn't he? Mr. Larry Boe.
Train gone, I believe it has. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Mr. Berry, and Attorney Crown. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to be heard before you tonight. I will say to you that I'm taking a little bit different position than the first speaker, Reverend Moon, took on Inspiring Spaces. I really regret that I was not here at your last meeting when the elderly gentleman spoke about raising his taxes on his home to do the things that you want to do with Inspiring Spaces because he was on a fixed income and could not afford it. I will say to you that I have been disappointed within the last several years about how money by this city council was spent and city council not accounting for the expenditure of that money. I know that you have disbanded the Inspiring Spaces Committee because when you went to Charlotte to meet with the consultants, you found out as a city council that that committee could not exist and you do a referendum for the funding that you feel is needed for Inspiring Spaces. I will say to you, all citizens of this city, and this includes me, are not dumb, stupid, and cannot hear and is blind and cannot read and acknowledge the things within ourselves that you are attempting to do. Yes, I'm blind, but I'm not dumb and I'm not stupid. And what I know to be true is that you disbanded that committee, but once you do a referendum, if you do a referendum, that same committee will be reappointed because that's the only legal way that you can do it. Folks, I am tired as a citizen of this city with you playing games with the cities to accomplish the things that you want to accomplish that may not be the best for this city. I've seen you do surveys of citizens about the swimming pools. It was voted by citizens in Northwest, Northeast Hickory that they wanted a swimming pool in every quadrant of the city and a centrally located swimming pool. You paid for that survey. You paid those consultants to do the work. And then what did you do? You turned away on because you got bit in the backside because you didn't expect those citizens to vote that way and put that on the shelf and it's somewhere on the shelf collecting dust. What else are you going to do at the expense of citizens of our city? And then if it's not what you want, you're gonna try to find another way to do whatever it is that you want to do. If you can't raise the taxes, then you're talking about doing a bond referendum to have every citizen in this city pay for a bond that work may not be done within their communities to improve their communities. But they're gonna have to pay for that bond. I will tell you, I will be the most outspoken person that ever existed to encourage citizens to vote against that bond. I will also be very vocal to encourage citizens to raise cane if you try to raise their taxes because we have so many senior citizens in our city that are property owners that cannot afford to have their taxes raised. So what I say to you is, you spent, you claimed $500,000 and some dollars for the sales on the square. You took the money that was designated for that parking deck and used it. And when that money was raised for that parking deck, which is much needed downtown, what's gonna happen now for folk who come downtown to events and there's nowhere to park? When y'all had the beer festival down in Union Square a couple of weeks ago, there were cars parked all over the place downtown, on every street within walking distance. So folks, we're gonna have to quit telling citizens we're raising money for one thing and then turn around and do something else with those funds. So I would say to you, bond referendum, no. Raising taxes, no. You find another way to do what you want to do. Thank you.
Well, you know, we've, well, cars parked everywhere. And we have an event downtown. That's what we expect to happen if it's well received. But I would like to say, Mr. Moon, it's our Inspiring Spaces. It's not gonna be mine. It's not gonna be yours. And we're not gonna, there won't be a single person that says, "That's exactly what I would have done." It's gonna be ours. It's gonna be compromised. And every decision's gonna be made in the best interest of the people of Hickory. I believe this council will look at it that way. What's in the best interest of the people of Hickory? We're not gonna have payoffs. We're not gonna buy people. It'll be what's in the best interest of Hickory. Motion to approve the minutes of April 15th?
I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Seaver, second by Zagor Oley. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. All members are present. Motion to reaffirm and ratify on second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Patton, second by Seaver. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. I know we're on the consent agenda now, but I want to ask that item L, which is the bond claim executed to Westchester Fire Insurance Company, I'd like for that to be taken off for further discussion, please.
Move approval for consent agenda with the exception of item L.
I'll second.
Motion by Meisner, second by Layle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. I've only been doing this 11 years. Come on. Okay. Number L, please, Mr. Perry. Number L, please, Mr. Berry.
Mr. Mayor, Item L is the ratification of a document that I executed in behalf of the city last week. As has been reported in the paper and as we've discussed in this meeting, the city budgeted funds to purchase a new ladder truck from a well-known company with whom we had purchased equipment before, American La France. Unfortunately, American La France, before they were able to deliver the truck to the city, went into bankruptcy, closed their doors. We had actually paid in advance in order to get a significant discount on the price of the truck. However, in our prudence of recognizing we were cutting a check before we had the equipment, we sought to have the truck bonded, meaning it would be insured, its delivery would be insured. As it turned out, we needed that bond and have worked back and forth with the bonding company and Mr. Wood or Attorney Crone can elaborate in more detail if you'd like. But basically, this past week, they sent us a release indicating that they would hold the city harmless to the tune of $729,864. So we're anticipating that payment in exchange for us releasing the bonding company from their obligation.
Is that the full amount?
That's the full amount.
And so Westchester saying, okay.
Okay. Very prudent.
Well, I wanted to emphasize the prudence of this. Aren't there some other cities, counties, fire districts that are proceeding without this kind of protection?
Potentially, yeah.
Well, I make a motion. Oh, you want us to ratify it? Is there any reason other than just...
Yep. There is. I don't have the authority to basically accept a settlement, and that's what this is. Only city council can accept a settlement. But in the interest of expediency, we wanted them to go ahead and cut the check. I went ahead and executed with the understanding that you all would ratify it this evening, and it becomes a formal acceptance of the settlement.
So the refund is coming from the bonding company, not La France?
Yeah, and then the bonding company goes after La France to get their funds.
And it's not actually La France. It's somebody else who bought La France.
Well, I guess then the question becomes, what about our fire engine? Because it's overdue now.
Yeah, we'll have to go back out to bid.
I mean, we'll have to start at square one.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to order a new ladder company from a different company. So, yeah, we start over.
Mr. Wood was very prudent in getting that bond. Our fire truck is in pieces in somewhere in South Carolina and maybe somewhere in Pennsylvania as well. But he's been very concerned and on top of this and has been corresponding with the bond lawyer as I have. And we're getting our money pretty quick.
How long would it take for us to get a new ladder? Do they have a...
It can take a year for those to be built. I mean, by the time we go back through the process and select another company, I mean, they don't have them sitting around on dealership lots.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
I'm sure Westchester's been out there looking for those, looking at those parts to see if there's a way to fit it together and sell it to us.
Yeah, we actually were more happy with the settlement financially. We were worried about getting a truck that had been put together ad hoc and the warranty issues and all that. So this is actually the best resolution for the city.
Hopefully, the check's in the mail. But they have the option of finishing the truck or having somebody finish the truck, and that would be a fiasco. We have questions about whether it would be under warranty. Getting our money back and getting it back quick and having an opportunity to look for another truck builder is in the best interest of the city.
I make a motion we approve accepting that.
Second.
Ratify the execution of relief. Motion by Wright, second by Zagoroli. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Information light?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Only informational item in this evening is to report your travel to Asheville, North Carolina for the Economic Development Meeting, MOOG Fest, April 23rd.
That's a pretty big deal. And what I wanted to say is, they didn't ask me because of me. They asked me to represent Hickory. And they said the topic of the discussion was innovation and economic development in Western North Carolina. And for them to have selected Hickory as the only other municipality from the West other than Asheville made me proud of the things that we're doing and the fact that the word is getting out there. So we are changing the image of Hickory, I believe. And we just got to continue working to tell the story here in Hickory and get our people to feeling better about themselves and what we're trying to accomplish. No, you don't need to approve those expenses. That's information, all right?
That's right.
Departmental report?
First departmental report this evening is kind of a continuation of action that council took at your last meeting related to the renovation of the old Lyerly Mill for the new corporate headquarters of Transportation Insight, a very exciting project in the city. As you know, in 2008, in an effort and a successful effort, I might add, to revitalize vacant buildings throughout kind of the core of the city of Hickory, you adopted a vacant building and demolition grant program. We've had a number of successful projects that have gone through that program. And this evening, I'll call on the city's community development manager, Mr. Dave Leonetti, to present the application to council for the $30,000 grant related to the Transportation Insight revitalization project. Mr. Leonetti?
Thank you, Mr. Berry, Mayor Wright, members of council, Mr. Crone. Tonight, I'm here to give a pretty brief presentation about a vacant building revitalization grant for the property at 56 Third Street Southeast. That's better known as the former Lyerly Mill property. Mr. Berry gave most of the background on this, but I'll just give a really brief sketch. There have, the program allows for grants of up to $30,000 or 15% of eligible project costs for the rehabilitation of vacant buildings. This is the fifth rehabilitation grant that has been considered since the guidelines were amended in 2011. There have also been four demolition grants that have been awarded. And then prior to that, there were about 14 or so projects under the previous iteration of the guidelines. To give a little background on the Transportation Insight, I'll be brief just because I know at the last meeting, they gave a very extensive discussion of all the things that they have planned for that site. But it's approximately a 38,000-square-foot building. It's owned by OHM Holdings LLC, which is basically a land subsidiary of the Transportation Insight Corporation. It's looking at putting their facility in that property. It's a former mill building. The total cost of the project is going to be around $6 to $8 million for the rehabilitation of that, of the mill building itself. The overall project is actually going to be significantly larger and is going to involve other parcels in the immediate vicinity. But the mill rehab will be around $6 to $8 million. Therefore, the property would be eligible for a grant in the amount of the full $30,000. And as I said previously, it's proposed to be used as the headquarters of Transportation Insight, Inc., that is a logistics company. This is an aerial photo to give you an idea. This is Highway 127, Station 1. The all-glass Ferguson Plumbing is over here. And Anico has their facility over here. This is that small strip mall right at the intersection of 127 and First Avenue. This is the existing facade of the building. Obviously, it's in need of restoration. It's been completely vacant for about three years now. For a while, there were some small operations going on, but it's been vacant for quite some time and underutilized for quite some time before that. From, you remember this probably from the presentation at the last meeting. This is the, just a rendering of the proposed look of that same side of the building. It'll be, this building is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. And as far as we can tell, it looks like everything is going to take advantage of the historic character of the building and try to maintain that as closely as possible. With that, the Business Development Committee reviewed this at their previous meeting in April and recommends approval, and staff recommends approval as well. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, I make a motion we approve it because we'd be going down a crazy path after the last things we've approved. Motion by Wright, second by Layle and Patton. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous.
Your next department report, I'll call on the city's Public Services Director, Mr. Chuck Hanson, to come to the podium. Over the last couple of years, especially during your budget deliberations, we've had a lot of conversation about street resurfacing and the needs throughout the city. And I thought it'd be prudent a couple of weeks in advance of delivering my recommended budget to you all to have Mr. Hanson do a more in-depth discussion about road paving and resurfacing throughout the city to put it in context of, for my budget recommendation in a couple of weeks. Mr. Hanson?
Thank you, Mr. Berry, Mayor, members of council. I'm going to run through about a dozen or so slides with you, and we're going to go backwards 20 years and forward 30 years in a few minutes here. The city of Hickory actually, a lot of words here, and I'm not going to make anybody read this or read it to them, but we work and do a pavement condition study, and we do those about every six to eight years. The last two are in '01 and '07, so we're about due for a new one in this upcoming year. And what it does is essentially grades our roads, and we grade them in essentially block segments. So you might not resurface a whole road. You may see us resurface one block of a street because that's the block that needs worked on. So again, this isn't, using one of our terms, this isn't us throwing darts at a board and that's the road we're going to resurface. There's a lot of data that goes in determining what you're going to do and what you're going to do to particular segments of roadway. The maintenance program we use, obviously, there's potholes that have to be patched after winter like we had a lot. Cold, wet weather has the road deteriorate. We're beginning to get a handle on those after this past winter. We do crack sealing, which as you've seen around town, that's that black squiggly line that runs down a crack that essentially seals that pavement, keep water from getting into the subbase. We do some full-depth patching, and I'll have some examples of these a little bit later, where we dig out a section and maybe from the size of this room or from here to the board behind you there and patch it back. And it either stays that way and you're right over top of it, or you're getting it ready for a resurfacing that's going to come along later and cover the whole road. But you really can't patch that, resurface that bad spot. In a couple of years, it'll be right back. Obviously, we don't resurface just for aesthetic reasons. There are structural reasons to do that. We do coordinate with other projects, water sewer, storm drain before we rework a roadway. Example is of that is, take the Armory in Northeast Hickory out beyond Lenoraian University. We've resurfaced some of that road out there. We've got a block from the Armory back up into Lenoraian College. It's pretty rough right now. That's scheduled as part of that project. But this flooding this past May actually washed out part of a storm drain system under there that through the prioritization of storm drain repair, we've got to fix that one. That one should be being worked on this month and resurfacing that segment, milling that down upcoming before the end of this year. So that's, again, that's sort of phasing and scheduling work that has to take place. Asphalt that goes on the powder, on the ground is, again, almost a cake mix. They're made different. There's a lot of study done through ITRI, which is the Institute for Transportation Research and Education. A lot of work done by the DOT and those working together on what is the best mix ratio, how much stone, how much asphalt, what kind of aggregate goes in to that asphalt that's gone on the ground. Asphalt today looks a little coarser than it did 20 years ago. That's because that mix design has changed to make it a little, actually, a little stronger. It doesn't look quite as pretty, but it's actually stronger and holds up over time a little better. And again, it's very important that going forward, we continue to utilize a pavement condition study to prioritize our roads and our maintenance programs on what we're doing going forward. These next half dozen slides or so are just some quick examples of the different types of problems that show up in asphalt. And they're all treated different. They're all caused by different reasons. They overlap, obviously, a little bit. But you treat these in a different method to fix them. This is called alligator cracking. And you can obviously tell why it's called alligator cracking. But this is one of the ones that'll make your road deteriorate real fast. There's a lot of holes right there for water to get in and in that subbase and make the bottom go away. And obviously, you're going to have a pretty massive failure there. This is something that is called block or transverse cracking. You can see, sort of see this block out here, this crack. This is actually not near as bad as the alligator cracking, but it is bad. There's a lot of places for water to get in. But you can see in this particular photo, they've actually crack sealed these cracks. Now, structurally, it's probably somewhat okay. It's not the prettiest in the world, but it's going to ride, it's going to stay there and hopefully keep some water out of it to buy some time before you have to go over top of it. Little bit dark. This is reflective cracking. You can see these cracks running down here. Asphalt, as it ages, it dries out and it wants to separate. The petroleum products in it begin to evaporate over time. They work through the mixture. You may have even overrolled it right there, put some stress point in it. So every time these reflective cracks come through. Structurally, overall, the road's probably in pretty good shape. These are some of the things we try to put some crack seal on, again, just to simply seal this up, to buy some more time for the whole road itself. Again, another example of reflective cracking here. This one, this one is obviously where the two paving machines, where they met, and that's the joint, what we call a cold joint, where the two paving edges met and rolled in that. That's sort of come apart in this case early in the process. This one's a little tougher to see, but essentially, that's a ruler laying across the little dip in the road. So that's, that dip can be caused by a couple of things. This is what we call rutting. That could be a lot of heavy wheel traffic right there on that. And again, it just basically compresses the subbase below this thing. It sort of sinks in. That's kind of places that in the, in the thunderstorm holds water you got to watch for, and this kind of places in the wintertime that holds water that freezes on you. Sometimes this ends up as, it might be a utility that has a ditch under the pavement that's settled over time. So there's a couple of different types of rutting that shows up. This one, we really don't have much of, but this is in some cases that mixed design issue or even, you see a little bit more of this on the country road that's had chips sealed on it, and the chips are coming apart, separating from the asphalt material. But this is a place that's rivaled up and, again. This one's what we see more as a full-depth patch. There's obviously some cracking and almost looks like a little bit of cracking and rutting right here. I think in our particular cases, it's in Hickory. This is somewhere else, just a stock photograph. But it could have very easily come over here and cut this whole patch out and taken this repair with it. So in this case, somebody made determination that, okay, maybe this is getting ready for an overlay, and that's all we had to do in this case. So that's sort of a full-depth patch where you literally go in here and cut all this asphalt out, maybe even dig the stone out and put more full-depth asphalt back into it. All right, with that said, in talking about the pavement condition survey, that's really just leading up to this sheet. Here's all these types of crackings that we just sort of talked about. When you go out there and you look at that, say, one block of road, the road starts with a grade of 100, and then you start deducting points for the condition of it. And so roads that rate sort in this 90 to 100 are usually in very good condition, so forth, so on. When you get down in here in the 60s and 50s, it goes, you know, fair, poor, and very poor. And so this is where you start getting, and a little bit where you, it's sort of like painting your house. If you've got a wood house and it needs painting, and you paint it when it's supposed to, you maybe have to go out there and pressure wash it, do a little mold work on it, prime a few little spots and paint it, and you're good to go. If you're a few years overdue on painting that house, you may actually have to take some siding off and replace some seals or replace some joints or studs. And so you sort of got to rebuild something before you can just simply paint it. And so in a maintenance scheme... And so in a maintenance scheme, what you wanna do is, is you want to resurface these roads in sort of in this middle range, not let them get down here. And every now and then, we'll resurface a road that is in this range right here and the example of that is the one out near Recreation Headquarters, 8th Street Drive Northeast, which we resurfaced this year. Had a couple of people, "Why'd you resurface that road?" It was built in 1997 if I remember right, but we started getting those reflective cracks in it and a little bit of alligatoring and right now, that's a four lane roadway, there's a lot of asphalt goes on that road. We could simply resurface it and it's gonna be a good road for another 20-plus years. If we let that road go for a couple more years, we would've been down in here doing some full depth patching and replacing before we could've resurfaced that roadway. So again, part of this, using your dollars wisely, is to optimize when you're resurfacing these things. Picture Hickory, City Hickory is in the yellow, essentially not that you're really trying to read much on the map here. Railroad track runs through town this way, so again, you can see a lot of roads in here, few less in the south simply because we're just, we're just, less roads down there, less depth in terms of to the south. Couple of different folks are responsible for roads in this city. Not that you can really see, but this map actually is what we call a power bill map and there's some roads you can sort of see in red in here and the roads that are red are actually maintained by the Department of Transportation. And whilst they maintain that, that means they're responsible for resurfacing those. And then in Hickory, they're basically the major roadways. 40, 321, 70, 127, Springs Road, Olinor Road, Sandy Ridge Road, Cloninger Mill, McDonald Parkway, the one-way pairs around downtown. Those are actually NC DOT roadways and they're responsible for paying for those resurfacing. Going back to Hickory, if you look in times, I'm talking about lane miles before I get into this little chart. A lane mile is something that is essentially 12 feet wide by a mile long. So if you have a two lane road, roughly 20, 24 feet, a mile long, that's two lane miles. And so when you get into talking a two lane road or a four lane road, it's a lot more asphalt and, you know, what kind of coverage are you getting? So in this case, in '01, we had about 450 lane miles, '07, 473, and we're up to about 485 now. One 12-foot ribbon from here to the beach, depending on what beach you go to, is probably about 350-plus miles, so that gives you some idea of what kind of lane miles we're talking about that we maintain. Sort of the last busy wordy slide. Few facts about our maintenance program. Over the last three years, we've averaged 9.2 miles of resurfacing with our annual $400,000 resurfacing budget. Every year, that varies a little bit. Obviously, when I say resurfacing budget, we actually contract this out, it's done by a private contractor, we bid that out and we bid it as tons in place, if you will, ton of asphalt in place. Some roads we can get by with an inch, inch and a half, some may require leveling course and so by the time you're done, you may be two inches thick depending on the road width. We have some neighborhood roads that are obviously wider than 24 feet because of parking on the road, so essentially we pay for this by tons in place on the ground. A few of the roads, we're sort of in an era in Hickory now where we have to mill some of these roads before that we can resurface them. So we go in there and cut out, you know, two previous resurfacings from years past in order to make room for the new surface course. One of the biggies here, at $400,000 a year, based on the lane miles that we just talked about on the previous side, 485, that puts us in about a 53-year cycle. That's a long time ago between resurfacings on roadways. We're seeing that in a lot of places across North Carolina, that's not just Hickory by itself by any means. So if you take, so, okay, the normal range you wanna be in is sort of that 25 to 30-year cycle. So if you simply do some math back in, and sort of back into it, we should be spending in that range, $800,000, $900,000 a year on resurfacing. And that sort of pulls us back into what is sort of an industry standard on a resurfacing range. So if you look at this, again, this is one part of our program, maintenance program, resurfacing. We also do a crack sealing. Over the past five years, we've cracked sealed about 20 lane miles of roadway. Again, that's adding two, three, four, five years, maybe even six years of life to that road before it needs resurfacing. So we've got, again, resurfacing, crack sealing component and in here, full depth patching. That full depth patching may be, we're patching a segment of roadway and it's gonna stay that way and that's what we're gonna drive over top of. We may be patching it that, two years from now, we're gonna actually go back and reseal that road. So full depth patching sort of does, goes both ways, if you will. Some cases, that is the end product, some cases, you're getting it ready for a resurfacing job that may come right behind that or a couple of years later. This slide is actually taken out of our 2007 pavement condition report and this report I'm talking about is data and something about an inch, inch and a half thick in terms of pages. The front, make sure I'm looking at it, the front blocks are the 2007 data, the gray blocks in the back are the 2001 data. And if you remember me talking about the ratings, the 90 to 100, 80 to 90 and on down the line, if you look at the '01, you can see we had somewhere in the neighborhood of 60, high 60s percentage of our roads that were rated very good and then it started stepping down. What you've seen over those, just these six years, is that this number has come down and this number has come up. So by a six-year window of time, regrading that same road is graded different on the scale of what condition it's in. So what we're seeing is, in this area, is when you want to really be resurfacing this road, you don't really want it to get in this area of this graph because then you're rebuilding a road, you're not resurfacing a roadway. Again, the new pavement study that'll come out over the next year, you'll see a little bit different block, but I think we'll see this drop a little bit, this come up and this, these two will rise again on us in terms of what we're expecting to see in the next study. Give you a little bit of comparison, this little tidbit here, you know we're part of the North Carolina Performance Measurement Program, we grade against about 17 other cities. Other cities that are ranking 85 or better, so all of this group and about half of this group, the other cities, the average is about 52% rank, you know, half of this and better. In '01, Hickory was 75, that's this block. In '07, we're down around 50, that's this block. So again, you can see we're probably about the same place a lot of other places are, but it's not getting any better on us, on any of us. This, these pie charts are about the same thing as I just showed you, little different look at, almost the same data, but if you just really look at the gray blocks on each one, this is '01 data, this was that 90 to 100 range, very good to good, and again, you can just see that it's creeping away on us. The different colors are the different types of failures that I explained about and what types of repair is gonna be needed to handle those. Again, you can see that just for example, here we had very little crack sealing that was really, really needed. Now, what we've lost in gray is almost moved over here in the crack sealing and resurfacing. Last slide gives you a little picture over the last 12, 13 years. In '01, again, this is cost per ton of asphalt in place, so this is what we're paying a contractor, put it on the ground as an end product. We were in that $30 to $35 range in '01. You can see the increase in petroleum prices. You can also see, in some cases, workload across the state, contractors having more resurfacing to do, which essentially raises the price of it. But most of this is petroleum increased costs, increased costs. About in this timeframe, we were spending about $200,000 a year in this era. We went up to about 250 in here, right about here, we started in the 400,000 range and that's what you can see. So again, you can see a couple of pretty dramatic climbs in here. Good news is, it has sort of leveled off on us about the last three years. This little bit of drop is, again, good in terms of, but we're still, still, again, with this average, we're still only in that nine to 10 miles, lane miles a year of road coverage in terms of total resurfacing. So that's 20 years back and 20 years forward almost, but 50-plus years on a resurfacing cycle's a long time. Any questions?
So the biggest reason of the greater deterioration now, the cost is more, not just the...
A big part of our losing ground on what we're getting done in the field is really the escalation in material cost and construction cost. That petroleum market has really changed our world here.
Do we currently have any roads that are not asphalt, that are dirt?
We have, don't quote me on this, but we have, we have a little under three miles is two-something around town that are gravel, that we maintain as gravel roadways and most of those are in the 300 to 700-foot long range. So it's not one big dirt road, it's a few little short sections that, and in that case, we maintain them as gravel roadways. There are a few in town that were never brought up to any kind of standard and they're a private maintained road. Somebody built a driveway on a public right of way years back when you could play out subdivisions and not build the road, you don't, we don't allow that anymore. Somebody's gonna do a subdivision, they have to build the road along with it. But there's something, I don't know, two to three miles of little short sections that are, we maintain as gravel roadway, so yeah, there are a few. Several years back, we were spending about $30,000 a year on paving some of those if we could get the right of way. Again, a lot of those have right of way issues and drainage issues, but most of the ones that we could actually get into and pave to get rid of the maintenance, gravel maintenance scenario, we've done, ones that are left or have some issue with, most of them with us right of way or something.
I got a call from somebody that was concerned about the sound of the new paving in front of the Highland Rec. Could you explain why it makes that sound as you drive in?
Yeah, it goes back to that asphalt pavement mix a little bit that I was telling you about. It's got a coarser aggregate in it and it's not, what we, in our terminology, the sand mix is the real smooth, flat, almost slick looking stuff. In this case, it has a coarser aggregate and that's what you're seeing making that. We tried to get it to sing a certain tune, but we couldn't quite make that.
Well, I know, she was very concerned about that and I said, "Well, maybe you should find a new route to go."
That's part of our speed control.
Speed control, does that help as far as water dispersment?
In this case, no. There are mixed designs that you see on some interstate systems where you have a pretty, again, I'm talking about multiple layers of asphalt. And so your lower layers are more waterproof, if you will, and that top couple of inches are a little more porous and the goal is that water to sort of wick down through that first couple of inches and then hit that non-porous layer and drain off to the side and that helps with a lot of spray back on from the cars ahead of you and obviously water ponding.
That's not the case?
That's not the case in this one, yeah.
Well, that explains that. Thank you, I'll tell her that.
I think too, also, the sound reflection has a lot to do with whatever's there it's bouncing off of. Yeah, that's kind of led into my question on, I know there's, just like any other commodity, there's varying degrees of quality and you kind of explained it there, so we kind of go for the best quality for the best price, I'm sure we can do that. And then people, companies put in bids, they also give you the quality that they're going to use or you got...
We spec, we spec the design mix that, so that everybody's bidding on apples and apples, if you will. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. I'm sure we will all view uneven pavement a little differently now. Okay. I'd like to appoint Dr. Razvan Mizeh to International Council and I guess this is my appointment, Bruce, Mr. Meisner, I mean, Mr. Walter Smith, is that yours or mine?
Well, I guess we have to fight over it.
Well, you, you appoint him, I'll endorse it. Mr. Meisner's appointing Walter C. Smith to the Recycling Advisor Board.
No, I'm, no, I...
You're endorsing, okay.
I want to appoint him to the Library Board to take Libby's place, Louise, because that was one of his requests.
All right.
If that's okay with you.
Darn it, I gotta find another recycler or...
You're not getting mine.
Didn't you read my email where I said, "Back off"?
They give you his phone number, tell you to call him.
I have, I have something to note on this. Steve Bowman, who is the current Chair of the Community Appearance Commission, decided that he was resigning and I talked to Mr. Bowman and I don't know that it was the result of me talking to him, but he has decided to stay on, which is a really good thing because he's a great, great member of the board, so...
He's rescinded.
Yeah, well, we can, we'll rescind that resignation or we'll just pretend like it never was accepted and I, so I don't know that a reappearance is necessary.
We never voted on it.
Yeah, right, I don't think a reappearance is necessary, but he is gonna continue.
And I would like to appoint Mr. William Knut to the Recycling Advisory Board for the Ward Forward Representative.
I make a motion, we accept all of those recommendations?
Second.
Motion by right, second by Meisner, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion is carried.
I'd just like to ask too, if anyone knows of someone to be willing to serve on the Art Commission or the Recycling Board for Ward Three, I'm still looking.
I'm looking for a year for the recycling.
Sometimes they're tough depending upon when they meet and so forth. Appreciate all the help I can get.
And I also need some help on recycling and we have the honor of being one of the best recyclers in North Carolina and we have in the works recycling cardboard and some other things, we aren't presently doing that. So it really is a meaningful contribution to the community. General comments?
I'd just like to make one comment. Yesterday, I was at Hickory High School substituting and went to the Academic Awards Banquet last night and Dr. Blake Brandis spoke, former Key Club President at Hickory High in 2002. He is now, I guess he's more or less on his own, he's been working with his Champions for Kids program, raising money to help, he's helped over a million kids in three years, he served in that capacity. He, actually at the Key Club banquet, the year he was president, the Rayland Scholarship Committee was present there to observe him and interview him after the banquet, he received that for Wake Forest and it's a very prestigious scholarship. While at Wake Forest, he got the Marshall Scholarship, which paid for his master's and his PhD at Kent University of England. So while he was over there, he was operating a business, he'd been making albums and things while he was in high school. And tried to get him to come to Kiwanis Meeting tonight to speak, but he's busy with some other schools, the Rowan Salisbury School District and some others around the state. So I think he's moving from New York City to San Diego too, so we'll try to, we'll get him back here one day, maybe get him to council meeting or something, just to say a word or two.
Danny, you want to meet with Kiwanis?
Oh, I also have some Kiwanis pancake tickets for sale, send me right after the meeting, we'll talk, make you a good deal on some pancakes, but you got them Thursday, Friday, Saturday at St. Luke's United Methodist Church, thank you. Friday, Saturday at St. Luke's United Methodist Church, there.
It's good breakfast, the money's for the kids.
Exactly.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn.
Does that move?
Second.
Motion by Patton, second by Layle, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Folks, thank you all for being here, and particularly the young people from St. Stephen.